Here we go.
Do you have a meeting ID?
Right there?
Thank you. I'll get this one logged in.
Yeah, you can just keep that. All right, Andrew. All right, everyone, we are live and I'm going to admit our guests for this evening. And then President Pro Tem Bryant, you may start the meeting. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. I would like to call the Reynoldsburg City Council Meeting of February 22, 2021 to order at 6:37 PM. I am Council President Pro Tem Kristen Bryant, filling in for President Jenkins this evening. This meeting is being livestreamed with closed captioning on the City of Reynoldsburg government webpage. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Cotner.
There.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Strickland.
Present.
Councilmember Savadi.
I am here.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Yeah.
And President Pro Tem Bryant.
Here. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved as submitted. The next item is approval of the minutes. Approval of the city council regular meeting minutes of February 8, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none. The minutes stand approved as submitted. Next item is community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens press council to bring matters to the attention of the city. Comments related to the public hearing may be made during that hearing period. The council president will invite speakers to be recognized and give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to exceed three minutes. Are there any comments from the community in the council chambers tonight?
No, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Did the clerk receive any comments from the community?
Yes, ma'am, we have three and tonight we'll start with Ms. Amy Clavon. And then we'll move on to Mr. Jerry Valentine and then finally Mr. Keith Benner.
Okay.
Amy, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you very much and my video's not on, is that okay?
Yes.
There we go. So, good evening, City Council Members and Madam Chairperson. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the ordinance to protect people from discrimination based on their source of income. My name is Amy Clavon. I'm speaking as a volunteer with Building Welcoming Communities, a group of people throughout our region who want to create diverse, inclusive, equitable communities for everyone. We believe that this ordinance sponsored by Councilwoman Strickland is critical to the residents of Reynoldsburg. Many people have income from social security, child support, alimony, disability income, veterans programs, or government housing programs. These sources of income allow people to afford the rent of units of their choice. Source of income ordinances are important because they allow families and individuals freedom of choice in where to live. It makes it possible for them to find housing that they can afford in neighborhoods that meet their needs, including resource-rich areas of the community. For example, this ordinance would open up housing opportunities near Mount Carmel East Hospital, a large employer adjacent to Reynoldsburg. Many property owners near this large employer do not accept various legal sources of income as payment for the rent of their units. This negatively impacts many people. On February 2, 2021, Zillow, an online real estate marketplace company, updated its website to include a listing of laws and regulations throughout the country that protect people from discrimination based on their source of income. They included an article entitled "What to Know About Voucher Assistance Programs and Protections for Tenants." This article quoted a small landlord in Cleveland who began renting to tenants with housing vouchers. He stated, "It eases the pressure on the tenant, which eases the pressure on the relationship between the tenant and the landlord." Zillow went on to state that to ensure that every qualified renter has an equal chance at renting, a growing number of governments at every level are enacting laws to ban discrimination against renters, including those who rely on vouchers to pay their rent. Zillow encourages all landlords to look beyond the law and treat all applicants without prejudice. The government needs to pass these protections as most, but not all landlords treat all applicants without prejudice. Research shows that source of income laws make a difference. One HUD study tracked five cities' voucher denial rates. In cities without these protections, they were exorbitant, topping 78%. But in cities with these protections, the denial rates plummeted, reaching as low as 15%. Lastly, source of income protections are an important economic development tool. They can spur growth in the entire region. In our county, we have a dangerous mismatch between where affordable housing is located and where the jobs are located. This is bad for businesses who suffer lost productivity and high turnover rates as they cannot attract a stable workforce. It is equally bad for employees who cannot live near where they can access jobs and are economically trapped in neighborhoods without access to job opportunities. We thank the Reynoldsburg City Council and especially Councilwoman Strickland for all of your hard work towards supporting this important initiative. We look forward to its passage and implementation. Thank you very much.
And the next comment?
Thank you, Ms. Clavon. Mr. Valentine, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Valentine and I am the founder and CEO of Renter Mentor, which is a social enterprise tech company whose mission is to help connect people to affordable housing. Our services assist landlords and tenants through housing processes and provide them access to needed supportive services. As a former employee of the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, I was able to work directly with central Ohio residents with housing choice vouchers and had a chance to see how difficult it is for them and others receiving similar help to utilize the assistance in order to obtain safe, decent, and sanitary affordable housing. The voucher program was established to give low to moderate income residents who had received the voucher housing opportunity and choice. But instead, the program has given recipients a stressful 90-day housing search process of a limited inventory of private market housing, making them more vulnerable and subjected to housing scams, predatory landlords, moving into high-concentrated areas of poverty, failure to utilize their rental assistance, and even worse, forced into homelessness. For all landlords who have connected with the Housing Choice Voucher Holder and are interested in participating in the HCV program, they must go through us, a three-step HUD compliance process that is orchestrated by the Public Housing Authority. The three-step process consists of submitting a request for Tennessee addendum, passing a housing quality standard inspection, and executing a housing assisted payment contract. The basic structure of the HCV program is governed by federal law and regulation, which all property owners should already be following, these housing quality standards to some degree. This structure is intentional in order to protect federal dollars, but more importantly, to protect the core rights of tenants and landlords participating in the program. Although HUD sets the majority of the program rules and regulation, public housing authorities have discretion to determine many important elements of the administrative process of the program. This is an important point to highlight because participating landlords need to know they can voice HCV administrative issues and concerns at a local or federal level and demand for public housing authorities to use their discretion to implement reasonable policy changes, especially if issues are reoccurring and are common throughout the Public Housing Authority's jurisdiction. I would like to make it known to all landlords and property owners that you will not be alone and that there are mission-driven organizations like Renter Mentor who are here to help, educate, support, and empower you throughout any administrative complexities and concerns when it comes to voucher holders in the program participation. It will take a community effort to make sure we are giving all residents of central Ohio the dignity of determining where they would like to live and have access to all rental housing and not just the city of Reynoldsburg, but in all of central Ohio's region. With that, I affirm that I support the adoption of the proposed source of income ordinance on the behalf of the Renter Mentor organization and I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Now, Mr. Benner.
Molly, President Pro Tem Bryant, if it's allowed, I would like to make my comments during committee.
This is not going to committee. It's on an agenda for first... Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Yeah, it's going to be read in committee tonight, discussed in committee, is it not?
Yes, I'm sorry. Madam President?
Yes.
Your three minutes will still be maintained, then, Mr. Benner.
No problem with that. Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any? Any comments from the mayor?
You, President Pro Tem, I think you kind of cut out as you were asking if there were any members of council that had anything to share.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I don't want to take anybody's spot if council has something I can go after.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to say a couple of things also. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Valentine, and also Ms. Clavon for coming in and, you know, voicing to allow this ordinance to move forward. With your experience and you all are very close to and see how this is affecting so many different families who just really want to have a place to raise their their kids and go to and attend a nice school. So again, I thank you for coming in and speaking in front of city council this evening. Thank you.
Any other comments from council tonight? Okay, Mayor.
Council, real quick, sorry. I just want to quickly say, this is more to the businesses in Reynoldsburg that I know the snow and ice is melting, but if you have sidewalks in front of your business, I ask you to please clear them because I was driving down Main Street the other day and I saw a lady was trying to walk on the sidewalks, but it was filled with nothing but snow and ice. And I know it is the business's responsibility to make sure the sidewalks is clear, just as the homeowner is responsible for making sure the sidewalks in front of the house are clear. So I just want to put out there to the local businesses, please make sure that your sidewalks are clear of ice and snow much as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mayor?
All right, I'm gonna go quick. Oh, all right, just wanted to jump in in case anyone else was. President Pro Tem, thank you very much. Just wanted to again extend the invitation to all members of council and the audience and guests to the state of the city that will be this Thursday night at 7:00 PM. Please join us as we kind of take a look back on 2020 and most importantly, where we're going in 2021 and beyond. Also wanted to let council know that our community commissions will be giving you their first updates at the meetings in March. So we'll be bringing them so you can kind of find out what are welcoming and diversity, our arts and beautification, our military recognition, and our traffic and transportation committees have been up to over these last few months. Some good information in there and some great suggestions. As you hopefully are all aware, we have our Tomato Festival musical lineup was released in its entirety this weekend. For those of you that may have missed it, on Thursday night will be the Land Sharks, which is a Jimmy Buffett tribute band. So there'll be lots of costumes, parrot heads, things like that on Thursday night. The 80s rock band Survivor, big fans of, you know, Eye of the Tiger and whatnot, will be on Friday. And then we will be bringing Arrested Development to town on Saturday evening. I do have one proclamation for us. I know every month is a... There are a number of things to recognize, but this month we are going to be recognizing American Heart Month. Whereas cardiovascular disease are the nation's leading cause of death, and whereas while progress has been significant in reducing deaths from heart disease, it is still the number one killer of both men and women. And whereas about 655,000 Americans die each year from heart disease, equivalent to one in every four deaths in America. And whereas one person dies every 36 seconds in the United States from cardiovascular disease. And whereas the American Heart Association's 2024 impact goal focuses on identifying and removing barriers to healthcare access inequality. And whereas estimated 80% of cardiovascular disease may be prevented through everyday healthy living steps, including physical activity, good nutrition, not smoking, maintaining healthy weight, and controlling blood pressure, cholesterol, and blood glucose levels. And whereas the American Heart Association encourages citizens to help save lives by calling 911 if symptoms occur, getting trained in CPR, and promoting comprehensive automated external defibrillator programs in their communities. And whereas the American Heart Association is celebrating February 2021 as American Heart Month, promoting education and awareness by encouraging citizens to learn the warning signs of heart attack and stroke. Now therefore, I, Joe Begany, the mayor of the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, proclaim February 2021 as American Heart Month, signed this day and on this time. So again, always good to take care of the ticker, especially in February. So please make sure you follow those healthy practices. Now I'm going to get ready to turn it over to our first guest consultants. As many of you know, last year, one of the first things that was talked about at City Hall was evaluating some of our resources, specifically when it comes to our service department and our parks and water department. COVID delayed a lot of those things. So we are going to be presenting to you tonight, hopefully, a group called Star Consultants that we would like to look at as performing a needs assessment for our city and its community in those locations. Just want to talk a little bit about what some of the options that may be presented at some point in time after this evaluation. Is it a potential where we would consolidate our Turo Road location with our Main Street location? Improvements to one or the other sites or something along those lines? This is not the first time the council has been... This has been discussed with council, going through back some records here at the city. It seems like it's on the clock for about every seven years or so, six to seven years. Somebody does come up with something because of the issues that are out at those locations. The real big emphasis on this is safety. There are grave concerns with the safety of the facilities at the Turo Road location. Sometimes we look at it with the best-case scenario of only losing a few hundred thousand dollars in equipment if the worst were to happen. The worst-case scenario obviously is potential loss of employee life in that location. It's just, it is not something that I feel is completely safe. So we are looking at our options so we can start planning ahead as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Service Director Dorman, who's been instrumental, and he'll tell you about the process of how we came to look at Star Consultants. Director Dorman?
Yes, thank you. The mayor did a very good summary there. Talking about the service department, I know in my past life I had been involved in building two new service facilities, one in the City of New Albany and also the City of Bexley, two completely different situations. But moving forward, it's been a need that a lot of communities had experienced and had to go through. Once again, as we continue to grow and look for the safety aspects of our employees first and foremost. A few months ago, the city put an RFP out there to develop this needs analysis. We had a mandatory site meeting with the consultants. I think we had about 10 different consultants show up to the site meeting, I believe. And then a few looked at the proposal, received proposals. We then had a committee formed of the mayor, myself, Director Baumann, our superintendent, street superintendent, water superintendent, as well as parks and recs superintendent as well, to evaluate all the proposals that we received. We brought in a few for interviews and based on that, we all felt that STAR would be the best option for us moving forward based on their past history and some of the things we really liked were their on track with time and budget, in particular their change order record of about 1% or less on most of their projects, including several multimillion-dollar ODOT facilities that they built. Somewhat similar to what we're looking for. As the mayor mentioned, the Turo site is in a floodplain. That floodplain has been filled in over the years multiple times, probably. There's not simple things such as even an eyewash station or a place for a contained area for painting or anything else. We do not have a fuel station right now, so currently all of our employees are having to go and wait in line at a gas station, which is not a bad thing, but it's during an event such as the ice storm we had many years ago and everything, or the derachia, I should say, when everyone loses power. You know, the last thing the city really wants is our police officers and everybody waiting in line with the public who's already frustrated trying to fuel their own vehicles. We need to operate 24/7 regardless in particular our police. So there's also the option for shared services potentially. So with that, I want to go ahead and turn this over to the team of STAR. I think we have Hamad and Ali on the line here and let them give us kind of a brief scenario on what they discovered when they were out on our side.
Well, thank you, everybody. We appreciate this opportunity. My name is Hamid Mukhtar. I'm the president of the company. And along with me, I have Ali Al-Ghathani. He is the vice president. And then we have the lead architect of our company, Chris Bandenali, with me. Again, once this RFQ came out, you know, we felt that this is our niche, this is what we do. And we have under our belt a number of similar projects which we're going to share with you. So again, all of us have 30-plus years of experience, you know. We stop at 30 because otherwise we look too old, you know. So with that, I'll let Ali introduce himself because I'll be doing most of the talking. So Ali, go ahead and tell them.
Yeah, my name is Ali Al-Ghathani. I will be the lead structural engineer and also help on the management. We've been... We have done at least seven of those in the state of Ohio of almost the same size. So we are very well experienced in this type of structures or land developments. Chris?
Thank you. I'm Chris Bandenali, Director of Architecture here at STAR. About 40-plus years' experience actually and been involved with the variety of the company's assessments and also putting together programmatic developments for various facilities and also pretty strongly involved in doing the process of quality control review, making sure our budgets are tight and on schedule. That's part of my role in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Now, can everybody see the screen I'm sharing? Okay, so a little bit about Star Consultants. Star Consultants is a complete architectural and engineering company. As you can see from the services list that we have, we have almost most of the disciplines under one rule, starting from architectural, structural, civil side, electrical, mechanical, commissioning, and so forth. During the construction, we provide a keen eye on the contractors, regardless of which delivery model it is, and we have in-house construction administration staff to take care of that. Just an overview of our organizational chart, which probably you would see on this project. I will be the project manager and as you can see, the lead... All the leads are well-experienced individuals, which are... Who are supported by other registered professionals in their disciplines. We'll share with you some of our previous examples that we have successfully completed on budget and on time. This is an ODOT grafted facility. The project cost was close to $5 million. As you can see in the overview, this is the truck storage office facility, truck storage facility, a truck wash on a five-acre site with salt storage, cold storage, brine, material storage. This was built in 2017. This project is very successful, you know. It also included site development. This project is one of the largest facilities that ODOT has built to date. Total square footage was almost 112,000 square feet. It included the administration area offices, truck storage, which was a huge space in here, mechanic space, and then we had wash bays, salt storage. It was a complete full-fledged facility situated on a 15-acre site. As you can see during the construction process, there's another view of that. This is the mechanic space on the inside. This span on the salt storage, huge salt storage. Ali, do you recall the capacity of this salt storage?
It's 16 tons, 16,000 tons.
16,000 tons, okay. This is about 47,000 square feet just on the truck storage, mechanic bays, you know, repairs, welding shops. Then we also had a full-blown paint shop on this project. The office facility has a lot of offices, conference rooms, IT rooms, and so forth. In other view of that, mechanic space. This is another facility, medicine counting, full-service maintenance facility. Again, as you can see, this is a full-fledged facility. There's a rendering of that with the office facility, truck storage, maintenance bays, cold storage, salt storage, brine, fueling station, exactly what you're required for. This is ODOT Athens Full Service Maintenance Facility. A very unique site and challenging site. We had to do a lot of fill into this because this was in the floodplain area. We had to raise the area. So again, a similar maintenance facility, office facility, storage facilities, you know, salt storage, fueling station. It also had a paint shop and a body shop situated on the location. This is just the inside office area view of that, and this is the truck parking internal space that you can see in here. Fayette County Full Service Maintenance Facility. Again, this was a demolition of existing facility and we had to go back and establish the new program for this facility. So the existing facility was demolished and we had a new facility with, again, office area, truck storage, mechanic space, cold storage, salt storage, fueling station. So again, it's the same kind of facility that City of Reynoldsburg is looking for. Again, we had some bioswales that were required to have retention at the site, you know, so we made use of those. City of Columbus, George'sville Refuge Station. Again, we have about six mechanic bays, office facility, which is in the front end here. We have truck storage, cold storage parking facility. I think the... This project is gone to the... I think the, this project is gone to the city council and it's in the approval process. The construction budget on this is approximately fourteen thousand, fourteen million dollars. Man Yard, City of Columbus. This was an existing site where we added the material storage facility and then also a truck wash facility. So what is required? You have two sites in here, you know. There's a wish list versus the reality. And based on our experience, you know, we go through a process. And what you see on this chart, this is a typical flow chart that we utilize to establish what realistically is possible within the budget you have and have realistic expectations. So what we'll do is we'll go through what the information is available. We'll have assessment of your existing facility. And then we establish a program for your facility, taking into account your future requirements, see what your manpower is going to be and how much space do you need. And then we'll, in light of that, we'll evaluate both your sites and make recommendations to the city, whether it is feasible to consolidate all those activities on one site or we need to keep both the sites, you know. That is still up in the air. Again, it is a function of your needs plus the available funding. So this is the tricky part, you know. Once we establish and everybody agrees on what needs to happen, the next step would be go into the design phase. And that's where we're going to design the project and also discuss with the city what delivery model would best suit this project, whether it's going to be designed with build or a CMR or a design-build project. And our team has extensive experience with all kinds of delivery models. In the construction, you know, you can have a best design, but if it is not closely watched during construction, we, there might be challenges. And our team ensures that whatever we design, what the design intent is, the same team carries over into the construction administration phase of the project. In other words, our team is going to be fully involved in the construction administration phase of the project and ensure that the design intent is implemented and the city gets a quality project on time, on budget. If you look at our client list, you know, what you'll see is this is just a partial list. We have worked with ODOT, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, City of Columbus, Columbus City Schools, Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, United States Air Force. The list goes on and on. I would say that in the last 25, 26 years, we have literally worked with every agencies and got commendation on what we have done, completed successful projects on time, on budget. We also have, in the corporate world, we have a number of clients, but the public sector keeps us so busy that we hardly get time to venture out in the private sector. We pride ourselves on how we do our cost estimation and how we predict what the project values would be. This is just a partial list of the projects that we have done. And as you can see in here, we predicted the cost in here and what the actual cost was. And the difference is represented in the last column, which is plotted on this graph, estimated versus actual cost, construction cost. And as you can see, that all our projects lies within 10% bound, you know. We did have some outliers where we overpredicted the cost, but most of the time, our budgets are or estimation are within the project cost. Historically, our change orders have been less than 1% on all our projects. The ODOT projects that we shared with you, the Grafton one with a budget of about $4.5 million. This is what the change order list is, and if you see that the change orders were less than 0.001%. On a $4.5 million project, we had about $3,200 worth of change orders. On Cleveland, which was about $17 million, we had less than half a percent of change orders due to errors and omissions. There were some site conditions and owner-driven change orders, which obviously are accounted for. What I'm talking to is due to our errors and omissions, you know. So we have an excellent track record on this. Obviously, we make sure that all the stakeholders are on the same page. We have candid discussion with everybody, open communication between all the parties, make sure that everybody understands what the project is, what the expectations are, and what's going to be the end product. So it is really important for us to have candid, honest discussions among the stakeholders to understand the real expectations, the project, make sure that the project budget is in line with the expectations and everybody understands how we're going to move from point A to point B and so on. So we feel that based on our prior experience, specifically with the construction type and facility type that you're looking, I don't think so that our credential could be matched. We totally understand what the scope of the project is. We understand all the delivery models, how to deliver a best product to you under the circumstances. We believe in partnering between client, ourselves, and the contractor, and that's the only way to give you a successful product. We do have the capacity and we can deliver on time and expeditiously if we are given the opportunity on this project. So with this, we just end our brief presentation. And if anybody has any questions, you know, we'll be more than happy to answer those, you know.
President Protem, if you don't mind, may I ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember Strickland.
So thank you, Mr. Hamid, for coming in and doing this presentation. I'm also a program manager, so I understand when you say, you know, making sure your time and budget is everything, right? And also managing the scope creep. As you know, as we continue to go through the process of creating a plan and really start designing and start implementing, things start to shift. How do you, how would you manage as scope creep, you know, may continue or may happen within the project? How would you manage that scope creep to make sure that you are coming in within a time and also budget parameters?
True, that's really a good take, you know. Scope creep is always a challenge on the project. And can you see the slide I'm sharing right now, wishlist versus reality?
Yes.
Okay, so this process, if you look at it, you know, at the end of, the toughest part in this process is what you see here. You know, that's why I said that candid, honest discussion and communication between all the stakeholders is really important to understand. And once we establish the program of requirement, you know, we will have options in there. And there's always a wishlist and there's always a reality. And at the end of this process, you know, we would agree to the scope and the budget. And anything that we add on is a scope creep from that point onward because once we move into the design, we would have a well-defined program of requirement. Now, if we deviate from that, you know, obviously, there's going to be either add or deduct depending on what we do. So that's why it's really important for all the stakeholders to understand that any change we do has a cost associated with that. And if the change, if we change anything early on, we can minimize the cost. If we bring on changes at the later stage, you know, the magnitude of or the impact of those changes are significant in terms of cost and schedule. And schedule is money, time is money. So we make sure that once we move out of this program, we all agree on what your requirements are. We, everybody understands how big of a facility you're going to get, what amenities you're going to get in there, and that's it. Yes, as we refine the program and go into the design, you know, once the design is refined, there's always changes, you know. But at every stage, you know, if you look at the flow chart in there, city review and comment, validate budget and schedule at each phase. So the budget and the scope, we just don't agree here. But every stage of the design, once we go in there, you know, we have to validate and make sure that we are on budget and on schedule, you know, and everybody understands that. So it's really important, you know, it's not a moving target, you know, it's a target that we have a budget and a schedule. And we have to make sure that we validate that at each design stage as we go along. Did I answer that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions from council?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I need my screen back.
Oh, sure, here we go. Did you get it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity. You know, our team would be leaving now. So is there any reason for us to stay longer or? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful weekend, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to communications. Molly, have we had any additional?
Yeah, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on to motions. First is a motion authorizing the mayor to apply for two grants from the recreational trails program and the Ohio, sorry, the Clean Ohio Trails Fund administered through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Director Boucher, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Thank you, Council President Bryant. This one is before you. As we had one in January, for the first one, I said we were going to get two other grant possibilities that are here. These have been delayed a bit. These will not go until later in the springtime. Three total grants that we're going after, they can be stacked up on top of each other. The grand total will be about $1.2 million for the project. And out-of-pocket expenses for the city, if we were awarded, would be about $350,000. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen because it didn't look like you got it added into. And I think just us walking through that maybe have helped for everybody to visualize what we're trying to do.
It's ready, Andrew.
Thank you, Molly. So as you can take a look here, this is a stream bank restoration project and trail add-on for a bridge. As you can see in the yellow lines, as you follow my cursor, this is the west bank of Black Lake Creek, senior center, Huber Park. To, so you can visualize a new bridge here. As you had just saw in the last presentation, this is a potential future site for new development if those facilities would be consolidated. The idea being that we need more connectivity in our grant packet. It's about eighty pages of an in-depth read of talking about where you can actually cross the Black Lake Creek safely, one being Main Street, the second one being Livingston. Both of those very tight when you do cross. The Livingston one has no actual barrier across like the Main Street one. So safety is a major priority. This one would be obviously connected to Old Reynoldsburg, this potential new development and everything to the north and south of it, to include the Redwood Homes. The idea being, you can tell that the creek bank erosion, you can see the Black Lake Trail. These are pictures as part of our application. And see, it continues. This is actually two years old at this point, last December, two Decembers ago. And so it's actually eroded a little bit further. The idea being, as we go back to this page, you can see we're creating much more of a riparian buffer. This is to reestablish that riparian corridor, allowing for the creek to have more natural movement north to south through the park. They will be taking out the honeysuckle in addition to other non-native species, replanting with native grasses that can hold deeper roots and allow for the functional ability of the stream bank. We'll be pushing the trail out, and this is really the first phase of potentially, you know, continuing to do that in other areas where it's sort of encroached a long time ago. This would have to be an elevation. This side of the creek, the west bank, is lower than the east bank, so it'll rise and then cross over. As I mentioned, $1.2 million total project. And then that includes all the stream bank plus the veins that would be going in here. These are rock veins. This allows for a more natural movement for the water, allows for better stream bank and as well as rippling tides, allows the water to move more naturally. So all of this is included in this. This is a project that I know our Parks Director Donna Baumann was after a couple of years back. The funding wasn't there. This coupled with, I know, some of the projects that we had talked about in executive session, as well as the future development of this site, allows this. And we think it is a great project that's going to allow the creation of more economic development because of this stream bank, being able to see into it. If you walk there now, you can't actually see the water, and that's, you know, I feel like that's a shame. We're missing out on a really great piece of the city that we can go and do. And typically, they don't do a lot of stream bank restoration projects through Morpsy, so the likelihood of getting this funded, I hope, is extremely successful. Certainly, we are asking for the right amount versus how much we would be paying back. And of course, we wouldn't pay anything or do anything until we're rewarded that. This project wouldn't commence until either 2022, 2023, and priority would be 2023. With that, I'd turn it over to any questions.
Okay. No questions for Director Boucher? Okay, well, so no questions. May I have a motion to approve this motion?
Motion.
So moved by Councilmember Baker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lawson Row, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item B, it's a motion recommended by the mayor to change the permit tech position in the Building Department from full-time to part-time. Joe, do you have anything for us on this?
Yes, Madam President Protem, just a couple of items. Earlier this year, one of our full-time permit techs took a position in another location. And upon further review of internal needs of the city and with the potential of us looking to add a part-time CBO into the city in the not-too-distant future, it was felt that for the time being, we could handle reducing the position from a full-time to a part-time position. This will not adversely impact what we're doing development-wise, but it will help us do a little cost savings measure in between the time that we might potentially bring on a CBO to maintain and kind of work with some of the other things that are coming in. This was something that was asked to be presented to you so that way you are aware of kind of what's going on within City Hall, again, in an effort to increase transparency.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Do you have a motion to approve this motion? Do you have a motion to approve this motion?
They're moved.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Salvati. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Strickland, thank you. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a motion to update the appointment of a member to the civilian review board. Attorney Shook, do you have anything for us on this item?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Councilmember Bryant. Uh, as indicated in the um, in the motion request, uh, Rick Keys spends half his time in Ohio and half his time in Florida. He's retired. He's living his best life, and he recently changed his voter registration to Florida. Uh, so he would be ineligible to serve on the board. In order to meet the law enforcement requirement for the board, I reached out to recently retired Sergeant Jeff Gregory, who was here on the Zoom call, uh, to ask him if he would be interested in serving. And, and I believe he is. Um, now, he's recently retired, so you know, I can understand how anyone might have any concerns about, you know, how his relationship with current officers, his ability to be fair and impartial. I can tell you, uh, based on my interactions with him, he has impeccable character. And, and I do not believe that there are any concerns for bias.
Thank you. Attorney Shook, do we have any questions from council? And I would concur with Attorney Shook. Um, Sergeant Gregory is an upstanding uh, member of, of the city of Reynoldsburg, and I think he'll be a great asset to this review board. So um, without any further questions, do we have a motion to approve this motion?
That's a move.
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Um, is there any further discussion? So all in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Item D. It's a motion to reconsider ordinance number four, 2021. An ordinance from the Reynoldsburg City Council reaffirming support for the Ohio Department of Transportation project to resurface U.S. Route 40 and other related improvements in Licking County, appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Uh, Attorney Shook? Uh, unmuted.
You'd think after all this time, I'd have Zoom figured out, right? Um, this is a motion to reconsider a ordinance that passed the last meeting uh, to reflect a, a change in the language. Uh, this was an ordinance that was passed as an emergency. However, the language at the ordinance indicated that it would not be effective for 30 days. So we're bringing this back before council to move to reconsider it, amend it, and then hopefully repack.
All right, and do we have any questions from council? All right, uh, may I have a motion to approve this motion?
Like to make a motion.
Moved by Councilmember Lawson Row. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Pecorale. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Uh, we now need to, a motion to amend ordinance four, 2021 to add the emergency language to section seven as presented in tonight's, tonight's council packet. Uh, may I have a motion to approve this amendment to ordinance four, 2021?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson Row. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Salvati?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
And President Pro Tem Bryant?
Aye. Ordinance four, 2021 is amended. Seven affirmative votes, no negative votes. I need a motion to approve ordinance four, 2021 as amended. Motion made by Councilmember. Strickland? And uh, is that a second from you, Councilmember? Salvati, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You need, you need to do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Salvati? Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
And President Pro Tem Bryant?
Aye. All right, ordinance four, 2021 is approved as amended. Seven affirmative votes, no negative votes. Next item on the agenda are reports. Um, uh, starting with the city auditor, um, Auditor Sisak, um, if you please.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, President Pro Tem Bryant, members of council. Uh, thank you, Molly, for having this um, slide on for me because I didn't trust my internet connection. But I just wanted to give you a 2020 recap. Um, it has been a year for the records. For the first time in our history, the price of oil futures were in the negative in last April. Uh, we experienced the S and P 500 index, had the quickest 30% decline in history in 22 days. We had the largest single quarterly change in our gross domestic product at a negative 31%. Uh, hardest hit were 6.8 million people, largest weekly initial jobless numbers, which were on March 28th. And unemployment went from 4.4% in March to its highest rate ever of 14.7%. However, there is some good news. So it has been a wild year. I just want to give you a, a recap. Remember, in our training, we set out every dollar that comes to the city of Reynoldsburg through our municipal income tax. It's broken down to the general fund, the CIP, and our debt retirement fund. The general fund receiving 73 cents per dollar, the CIP 15 cents, and the debt retirement fund 12 cents. And if you'll see, our, our general fund is at 13.2 million dollars, and, and that's pretty healthy. Our um, CIP is at 4.1%. We're down a little bit from last year, but that's to be expected with the reduced collections that we've been experiencing. And the debt retirement fund is at two and a half uh, million dollars. This revolves just about every year so that we can pay our debt and not our bonds. Um, next slide, please.
All right.
Thank you, Molly. This is our, our general fund, and you can see how we finish up in uh, 16, and you see a gradual increase. Seventeen and a half was when issue 11 came online. And then there was um, a surge of spending in police cars and things that hadn't, we haven't had for a long time in 18, uh, 19, that seemed to calm down a little bit. We finished a little bit better. And we did even better last year with our uh, controlled spending and with the availability of the CARES Act funds. At the end of the year, we were able to add that two and, two point some, uh, 2.1 million dollars to our uh, to our general fund. So if you'll see, it, it looks pretty good. Okay, thank you, Molly. The 410, the capital improvements. Back in 16, we were, our CIP had a very small balance, 2.4 million dollars. And we gradually built it up. The big bar in the center is the community center. So we've got an increase of 42% from 2016 to 2020. However, just remember that, that 15 cents per dollar goes to the 410 fund. And this is where we pay for all our capital improvement pro, uh, programs and projects. And the next slide is something that's near and dear to the mayor and my heart. Every month, twice a month, whether it's a holiday, Saturday morning, whenever it is that these numbers come out, I share them with the mayor immediately. Going back, it's hard to read, uh, but a picture tells a thousand words. Back on the left side is our, these are our collections for our municipal income tax. And as far on the left bottom of the um, graph, you'll see that's 12 of 17. All the way, let's see it. I can't even figure that part out. But you'll see on the far right, that's our current, uh, these are current years. It's a little small for you to read, but in your packet, I'm sure you could see it. And I broke that slide down into the next slide, which is a little bit more easy to read. You'll see where COVID hit us last month, or last year in April. Our deposits were usually right about 2 million and then and a half, uh, million and a half halfway in um, to the month. Now, if we go back to April and you look at this, you'll see we haven't had a deposit over a million and a half dollars since last April until Valentine's Day weekend, in which I was very happy to share that with the mayor. We took that as hopefully a current, uh, a turn in the events of our deposits. But that's the fate, uh, the, this is the, uh, exact numbers that we are receiving right now. So we have been, this shows about a half million dollars of reduced revenue since the, every month. And what that e, uh, equals to our people in Reynoldsburg is about 20 million dollars in less payroll per month earned. And hopefully, we'll see a, a turnaround with the vaccinations. And we'll see these numbers go back up to, uh, in the two, two and a half million dollar mark. But I just wanted to bring all this information to you as we move forward in 2021. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Um, I, I do have a question, um, Auditor Sisak. Um, and maybe I might have missed it. What was the um, total earned income from the city, uh, or to the city last year?
Um, I haven't had it totaled up, but I'll get that to you in an email. I usually have been looking at this in a um, month-to-month basis.
Okay.
We're actually not even finished. We're not finished with the accounting for the whole year. This is just our general fund balances.
Okay. Um, also, um, what about, um, do we have an idea regarding the expense that the city um, did for 2020? Like, what was that total expense for the, you know, 2020?
Those numbers came in from the bud, uh, from the mayor's office and our budget. And I think we just finished just right around underneath the budget uh, numbers. But I'll get you the final numbers when we're done calculating the accounting.
Thank you. Uh, and I'm hoping that, again, we can, um, you know, move it into 2021 that, um, just knowing what those numbers are, and that way we can kind of compare as we, um, you know, uh, move throughout 2021 and, um, hoping our overall budget is on track. And, um, you know, as a city, we are in good standing. So thank you.
Absolutely. The mayor and I work on this all the time. We are very much aware of the reduced revenue we've been experiencing since COVID-19 hit us. And you can see by the numbers on this chart that, um, they're not, they haven't topped one and a half million dollars until just this past, uh, the weekend, holiday, uh, St. Valentine's Day weekend. And that was at 1.6, and everything else has been below that. So we still need to be very cautious of everything that we're doing.
Okay, do we have any other questions from council or Auditor Sisak on his report?
I have one quick question. When will those numbers be done? Do you have a rough idea?
I, I didn't hear your question.
I said, do you know the timeframe that those numbers will be done, just out of curiosity?
Well, we, we're fi, uh, finalizing the calculations right now. There are, there are small things that are going on that, uh, they're gonna, they're not gonna change very much. But to the penny, we still have bills coming in from last year.
Um, Auditor Pro Tem. Auditor Sisak, would you mind sharing your monthly figures with us? Um, I think, uh, at least until you can get the annual ones together, that would be of interest.
Certainly, they're, they're included every month in the TIB report. So when you go into your packet and you'll find a graph that looks just like the one that you've seen.
Yep. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody knows where they can find it and. We have any other questions? I see some hand movements, but I don't know if those are questions. Um, yes, Councilmember Lawson Row?
Yes, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Um, Auditor Sisak, um, thank you for the presentation. I do have just two quick questions. Um, okay, we know COVID was like the headliner for 2020. Um, barring COVID, not including COVID, um, tell me, um, one, one bright spot, um, in terms of your audit. And then two, uh, tell, tell us the challenge without using COVID.
Um, challenges always remain. Um, that's something else that we're gonna talk about later on in this evening. I have a, an employee that has been, served the city of Reynoldsburg for over 30 years, and she's choosing to retire. That has been a, a, a big concern of mine. I have been very, very happy in the amount of communication that I'm receiving and working with the mayor's office and with his directors. I don't see any of us, any kind of spending this frivolous or things that we don't need. But I, I really can't, um, the way I work in my office is I can't speculate on numbers, and I can't, I can't foresee the future. So I, I pretty much just live in what we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. The, the thing that really bothers me is the reduced amount of interest rates on our treasury investment. The, the interest rates went from 3% down to less than a quarter of a percent overnight. And that's, that accounts for one of the third-largest sources of income for our city. But that's all. I, I don't understand what you mean of as far as for like a, a bright spot. All I know is that we, we finished better than we did last year.
That's a huge bright spot. Thank you. I just wanted, in layman's terms, what was the challenge? And what was the bright spot barring COVID? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Auditor Sisak. Um, moving on to the clerk of court, clerk of court report. Uh, Clerk Prasher?
Madam President, the clerk of court reported for the weeks of December 3rd, December 10th, December 17th, December 23rd, and December 30th, a total revenue in, income of 13,277 dollars.
Thank you, madam. Uh, next item uh, is that there is no Development Parks and Recreation Committee uh, tonight. Uh, so now we are on Public Safety Law and Courts Committee. And I'm going to turn that over to Councilmember Lawson Row.
Uh, thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. This is the Public Safety Laws and Court Committee meeting for February 22nd, 2021. Members in attendance, our Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Pecorale, Vice Chair myself, and you, Madam Pro Tem Bryant. Item one, an ordinance to amend chapter 503 of the codified ordinance of the city of Reynoldsburg to provide fair housing opportunities for individuals and their families regardless of the source of income to pay such accommodations. And before I ask Attorney Shook? And before I ask Attorney Shook for comments, I invite you, Mr. Benner, um, to share your comments in, uh, the three minutes you yielded till, till now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson Row. Um, I have spoken with many of you one-on-one and, and I certainly appreciate you making yourselves available to those that I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to or, or connect with. Mine is an unpaid position, so time is, doesn't allow me to talk to everybody, but, um, I've provided each of you with copies of the contract a couple of weeks ago. I hope that you've looked at that contract. I find that to be one of the more egregious parts of this legislation. Not necessarily the legislation, but the housing voucher program. I think it's necessary, I make something clear because I don't believe I've expressed it before. Affordable housing is an issue. Um, housing segregation is certainly an issue. I'm not against trying to fix those. It is my opinion that this legislation as written will not move towards solving either of those issues. The other problem I have is that it lumps me and my colleagues. I'm speaking of people I know, friends I know, colleagues I know that have one, two, six, eight, whatever, a few rental spots here in, in Reynoldsburg. And you're lumping them with Caleb's Crossing and Century City. Those conglomerates will swallow this pill without any issues. I'm not sure how many of us might choke on it. Regardless, uh, I appreciate everyone listening. For those that I haven't been able to discuss this with one-on-one or any other rental legislation that's being considered, I'd be happy to do that. Uh, if you just reach out, if you're convinced factually that this legislation as it's written right now will solve the problem, then it is your duty to vote for it. If like myself, you have reservations, then perhaps it needs to be revisited. And maybe it can be altered in some way that will, might make it, uh, more effective than I believe the current legislation is. As always, I'm happy to live in a city where the city council and its members will listen. When someone wants to talk to them, I appreciate the mayor and Attorney Shook. I wish you all good luck and I thank you for my three minutes. And I think I got it so Molly didn't have to yell at me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benner. Appreciate your engagement. Attorney Shook, would you like to offer any comments on this legislation?
Uh, yes, just briefly. So this is, we've had now two work sessions on this legislation and on, uh, the other items of rental legislation here before council this evening. Uh, it is now being presented to council as a first read. I did have a conversation with Councilmember Strickland about making, uh, an amendment to this particular legislation between now and second read. My understanding is that, uh, our intent with the amendment would be to, uh, change some language that affects how they count income. So this legislation prohibits discrimination on the base of the source of that income, but landlords can still discriminate based on the amount of income a potential renter has. And if, if my understanding is correct, then Councilmember Strickland can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, new language would be added to require that the value of a voucher be added into any calculation of a renter's income for that purpose. And so that's something that we'll, we'll work on to make sure that that language works appropriately. And we'll, we'll submit that language between now and second read.
Thank you, Attorney Shook. Are there any, um, questions or comments from the committee?
I do. I want to ask Mr. Benner. What, what, I, I don't know how many properties you own and if you're comfortable sharing that. You've been the only one in the community that's, that's come out and spoken out. So maybe, and, and you did reference some colleagues that, that you, that you do share, uh, some concerns with. You know, what, how, what's the biggest concern you have and, and that you see to fellow landlords and, and property owners with the implementation of this particular legislation?
Thank you, Councilmember Cotner. I, I do know several folks in, in Reynoldsburg that own anywhere from one to maybe six or, I own six. These aren't people who, you know, several people that have testified have said that, um, you know, if, if, when you go into this business, then you should expect some regulation or this or that. These aren't sophisticated people. These are people that have maybe, um, maybe inherited a house. You know, they're not, uh, real estate moguls. They're just a guy who, who got a house from his mom or dad. Didn't know what to do with it, didn't want to sell it at the time, put it up for rent, has some renters in it. Dealing with the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, understanding full well that they mean well. It's just not an easy thing for the average guy to navigate. I know your earlier Mr. Valentine, and I've spoken with him before. I texted, I guess, back and forth, but, uh, his mentorship, you know, it seems odd to me that I've been doing my own properties for over 15 years. I've managed property for over 30 years. Metropolitan Housing Authority thinks I have to go to a class in order for me to be able to accept one of their renters. That just, that doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. Now those classes are either waived now or they're being done like these by Zoom, but, um, still, uh, it, it's a problem. The contract is the biggest problem. The contract, if you, if any, if you read it, it tells you that if your tenant that's on a voucher has an extra child, if they get pregnant and have a kid while they're living in your unit, they can stop payment and, and actually make the tenant move. Uh, that doesn't seem like a program that benefits an underprivileged or economically challenged person. That person, uh, all they did was have another baby. Uh, if indeed they have an older child that maybe joins the service or leaves the house, it changes their status with the Metropolitan Housing Authority. And the authority can terminate the contract at that point. The Metropolitan Housing Authority is the boss. It says plain and simple, they control. And I just, I find that hard to live with.
And we're looking, the, the, the comment we've heard a lot is, is the housing shortage, the, um, and, and looking for affordable housing. Do we, do we have any indications that voucher programs will help costs be lowered? Or maybe Mr. Better, if you know, do, do you see these as potentially being rising costs for, um, the property owners and, and ultimately the tenants in, in a situation where vouchers become required?
I'm not sure the legislation alone will raise rents in Reynoldsburg, but Andrew Bowser is raising rents with all of the development that's going on. Sorry, Andrew. These new places are going to make all the boats rise. Your average, I looked today, I actually have a rental that's going to be available soon. I looked on Zillow and, uh, I was shocked that three-bedroom, one-bath on a slab in Brookside is, is actually, people are asking $1,275 for rent. That's amazing to me. I spoke with a council person today. I, my rents are nowhere near that. But my tenants are friends or they became friends. My tenants are people that needed a break and got a break. And so now they, they're good members of the, of the community. They love the schools. You know, one of the things that I heard was, well, this will help people get into schools. Reynoldsburg has open enrollment. Well, you can get into our schools. I don't, I think the development, I think the, the fact that Reynoldsburg is growing and, and getting as better as fast as it is, is going to make all rents go up. And that in turn is going to affect your voucher holders. You know, you had Amy Clayburn on who lives in Bexley and, and they passed the law. I guarantee there's no housing vouchers being rented out in, in the city of Bexley.
I, I did a
Rents are just so high. I mean, it's, it's nothing against the people of Bexley. I don't mean that, but, um, rents are high. And, and in an area where the market can charge what it can charge for rent, that's what it's going to be. And I don't see how this is going to help matters.
I did a, a brief search into, into Bexley, um, after receiving the letter from, um, Ms. Clayburn and knowing her, you know, the, listening to the, the story, uh, for, on ABC when they, uh, talked about Bexley passing that legislation. And, um, not only can you not really find anything for a voucher, you can't really find anything to rent in Bexley. So I'm not really sure that Bexley scenario, um, is relevant to what's happening in the city of Reynoldsburg. That is the second fastest growing market in the country. Development on every corner. Uh, you know, there's been a lot going right here for a long time. And there's been a very open door for quite a while, while not perfect. I know that we have a lot of, uh, Auditor Sisak, I, I know you've shared with me, maybe you recall some numbers, but you have talked about uh, some of the vouchers that, that you've seen, the numbers, statistics through, uh, the, the central metropolitan, the Housing Authority. Reynoldsburg has a pretty large number comparatively speaking to other central Iowa communities already. Is that accurate from what you have seen and shared before?
Councilman Cotner and members of council. When I, before I was a council member, I owned the FedEx routes in Reynoldsburg. And I always wondered what the little white cars that said CMHA were on them. And I would see them all over the city. So when I did get into council, I, I did a request to find out what this information was. And I wrote them a letter and I did get a, a response. I asked for the amount of residents and units in Reynoldsburg. And I did get, I asked for the comparison into all the suburbs of Columbus. And Reynoldsburg has, uh, this was, my numbers are from 2017. There's some, Mr. Better even commented, he's not sure if they're right. I asked for the city numbers, but they said 43068. So it might include below 70, which, um, is not the city of Reynoldsburg. But it does give you a good idea for our other suburbs. In 17, we had 412 units. Groveport had 14. Hilliard had 140. Upper Arlington with 160. And New Albany with zero. So Reynoldsburg is the city of respect and we, we do, we are a welcoming community. And we all want to see everyone have a home. But that's just what I wanted to share. I have no other comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Sisak. I, I do have a question, President Pro Temp, since we're in committee. Is it, um, appropriate to ask, um, Ms. Amy Clayburn if she'd like to offer, um, any remarks? Since we have Mr. Benner offering remarks.
Attorney Shook, is that allowable?
Here we go. One, one second.
Madam, Madam President, you may elect to invite anyone to speak, uh, at, at any time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clayburn.
Um, so a couple of comments, uh, to respond. We'd like all municipalities in, um, all over the country, not just here in Franklin County, to be welcoming communities. And I'm glad to hear the number of, uh, units already in place that, um, accept housing vouchers. It's economically good for the community for people to have the choice to be able to live where they want. This is not a question about where I live. And, um, just be clear that the city of Westerville has already also adopted, um, an ordinance to protect people from discrimination. The city of Columbus is supposed to be having their first read on this, um, type of ordinance on, uh, March 1st. My understanding is that they have finally approved through their processes, the ordinance that they'll be looking at. Other communities are as well. The, um, to say that a landlord may have inherited their property and therefore they don't have to fully understand all of the rights and responsibilities of being a landlord and the commitment to their tenants is not, in my opinion, an acceptable view. Yes, there are various regulations that are difficult or maybe the first time. But as, um, Mr. Valentine testified earlier, there are organizations to help if a landlord needs that assistance. There are many, many small landlords all over the country that do participate in the housing voucher program. It does provide, um, a steady source of income if a tenant loses their job or other things happen, and so their income is reduced. So many landlords, big and small, um, do already participate in this program and have learned the processes that are needed to, um, run their business or, you know, if it's a small landlord, um, make it financially, uh, successful for them. So it's important to protect people who, regardless of where their income comes from, to be able to choose where they're living throughout the community. Reynoldsburg is a growing community and there's a lot of economic development, which is fabulous. When you look into the future, you want to ensure that housing is available. The, um, rent paid through the Housing Authority has gone up recently. And it'll continue to react to market forces. And that will help citizens of Reynoldsburg be able to access units, um, throughout the community, based on their needs and their desires. So thank you, and I'm available for questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Clayburn. Yes, President Pro Temp.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson Row. Ms. Clayburn, do you have any idea? I, I know, um, Auditor Sisak and, and Councilmember Cotner were just the voucher use in Reynoldsburg. Do you have any, um, any, any information on, on that? In terms of, um, how many of those are actually within the city of Reynoldsburg as opposed to simply just having a Reynoldsburg mailing address?
I do not, um, but I can ask the, um, Housing Authority if they could provide that information. And, um, which I assume they can. And, uh, forward it.
Yeah, I think that, that would be appreciated because we do have a fair number. Plexes that are on the other side of seven. I think that, uh, tends to taint our numbers a little bit.
And remember that, um, there are about 12,000, um, vouchers within Franklin County, I believe it's the county. And, um, so if 412 in 2017 were potentially within, um, Reynoldsburg, that leaves, um, the vast majority, 90 some percent, 95% are in the city of Columbus. And it's important, when you look at the mapping of where the, uh, usage of the housing vouchers are within Franklin County, it follows the redlining maps from historically when redlining was started. They are concentrated and it, um, many people would like to have a choice to live throughout the region and have access to jobs. So we would look at this region wide and look at the impact on the people who have vouchers. But yes, I will contact the Housing Authority and see if they could provide that information.
Thank you, Ms. Clayburn. I, I see Mr. Mayor had a question earlier.
Thank you, um, Chair Lawson Row. I don't have a
I don't have a question. It was more, I, after the last meeting, I actually did some data mining and to find out through the Columbus Metropolitan Housing website to get an idea of some of the misconceptions that might be out there. I do believe in what Auditor Sisak was saying was accurate in terms of the availability of places, of housing units that, that will accept vouchers. However, the use of vouchers is significantly different. These are numbers from 2019, so obviously things have changed considerably in that time period. A lot of housing has gone up in, not only in Reynoldsburg, but in surrounding communities. Basically, according to their website, 4% of the county's housing is located in the ZIP code 43068. So in 2019, they're estimating that there are about 564,325 housing units in the Franklin County area. Of that, you're looking about 22,573 in the 4308 ZIP code. So when you look at the potential of about 1% of that is, of residents in Reynoldsburg would be, or on the 4308 ZIP code would be in a housing voucher system, you're looking at approximately 130, uh, units in the 4308 ZIP code. So that doesn't even include just specifically the city of Reynoldsburg itself. That includes some of the other areas outside. So we are not talking about a large widespread use within Reynoldsburg itself, according to the numbers from 2019. That's just for factual information, based on some of the numbers that are out there that the Columbus Metropolitan Housing had put out. Again, their most recent information was in 2019. I thought I'd add that.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Well, with that, I will, um, close the comments. And I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first read. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Pacarao. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item two. An ordinance to establish chapter 701 landlord-tenant relationships of the cutified ordinance of the city of Reynoldsburg. Attorney, Attorney Shook, will you offer any comment to this legislation?
Uh, yes, this is the renters' choice legislation. The language is the same as was presented at the work sessions on this item. It's up for a first, or up in committee for a motion to go to first read tonight. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Do we have any questions from the committee?
Yeah, I do. So this one's again, a little, little different. How, we haven't talked near as much of this one. It's kind of sliding by as an auxiliary piece. But is this the type of legislation that's been kind of hand in hand with Source of Income in other communities? Is, is this something a little more unique? I'm just kind of curious. And again, the, the attorney that spoke the first night didn't seem to care or have a preference or problem with it. But I'm just kind of curious about a little more history on this one. And, and, you know, how that's kind of gone along with that.
Yeah, I don't know that I could speak to whether this is an item of legislation that necessarily goes hand in hand with Source of Income. The Source of Income legislation was requested by Councilmember Strickland. This legislation was requested later on by Councilmember Baker. I, I believe at this time, Columbus is considering legislation very similar to this. I know the city of Cincinnati has passed legislation of this nature. But I couldn't see it necessarily go hand in hand.
Um, then Councilmember Baker, I mean, can you share then your thoughts into this? I mean, I, I get it. I, I have thought, you know, anytime you're going to go rent something, you got to come up with first month, last month, security deposit. I mean, it, it's expensive to get into a rental, you know, seems like more than a, than a buying your own home sometimes. But I'm just kind of curious of a little more background then of, of where the, you know, again, taking the ownership rights away and mandating what, what the city council is going to say to, to property and business owners.
Sure, I'll speak with Councilman Cotner. First, I came upon this when I did, I read an article in the Cincinnati Inquirer when Cincinnati was bringing this up for a vote. And I did my own research, reading about this specific ordinance. Cause this is one piece of, several pieces that the city of Cincinnati had passed. And when I asked Attorney Shook to put this together, I want this to be Reynoldsburg specific, not the same legislation as Cincinnati. Cause I believe that it should tailor to the community that it's gonna be in. Part of that and part of it is my personal experience as a renter. When I, this really stems back when I was in college. And also seeing firsthand of my parent, you know, my mom tried to rent where there's places that we really liked and we were turned away because my mother cannot afford to pay a security deposit, first month's rent and last month's rent. I don't believe that a person should have to pay a, a previous rent when they haven't even lived in the unit in the first place. And it stems to my personal experience when it comes to renting when I was a student at Ohio State, where there was a lot of places that I looked at, I really liked. But as a college student, I could not afford because they wanted first month's rent and a security deposit, which is typically, uh, not typically was the same amount of the first month's rent. Now you asking a college student to pay basically two months worth of rent upfront. That's, that's crazy, especially when working a part-time job for minimum wage at the time was $8.50. So with that being said, when I read that, it clicked in my mind that this was really good piece of legislation to help break down a barrier that most people with limited income cannot afford. And that is a common barrier when it comes to deciding where to live. And, and so I thought the city of Reynoldsburg could benefit from this because I remember a discussion I had with Mel, uh, Superintendent Melvin Brown. And he told me at the time, this was about a year or two ago, the number probably is over 50% at this time, that most of the students that go to Reynoldsburg schools, 45% of them, I'm sorry, is either on free or reduced lunch. Now, I don't know about you or anybody else, but I don't think anybody making 80 grand a year is going to be on free or reduced lunch. This is people that live below the 250% of the poverty level. And this is Reynoldsburg. I'm not talking about Columbus. I'm not talking about Groveport or Gahanna. This is Reynoldsburg, which I found shocking and sad. So when I looked at this piece of legislation, it just coincidentally had around the time of, Councilwoman Strickland, because I wanted to introduce this earlier. But I didn't get a chance to get to it because I wanted to be right. I didn't want to rush something. So that is the reason for this legislation. And I said it once and I'll say it again, even though some do not agree with me, that landlords will get their money. It's just that they're not getting it that day of. They have six months, according to this legislation, to, um, for the tenant to pay them the money. Rather, they're doing it as a separate payment or part of the payment of the rent. That way, when somebody chooses a place to live, they're not hit with all these monies and fees. And I understand rent, uh, rent basically goes up for anything. I remember when I would, like I said, I was written in college, my rent went up twice, uh, went up twice, once each year because they claim, oh, it's going up because of the water. They claiming it is, went up because they're doing renovations and stuff like that. And that hurts, especially when you're on a limited budget and you have no one else to turn to. So this piece of legislation helped relieve some of those, I will say pains that a tenant, you know, cannot afford to go into the unit that they like. So that's why this piece of legislation came about.
Well, it's, it's not six months. It's, it's six months at a reduced rate or it's 11 months at the full rate. And, you know, still a concern though, that at least, you know, has to be considered is if you're splitting that security deposit over 11 months and two, three months in, you have a tenant that defaults on payments and, you know, is, uh, torn up your, your place. Again, Mr. Benner's been fortunate to have some good renters that he's developed good relationships with, but they don't all turn out that well. So, you know, again, I, I think that's still a, at least a point to be aware of and respect to, to realize there are property owners that invest a lot into the small property owners. I mean, I've seen Mr. Benner and the properties he's got working hard. You know, he's not out there trying to shortcut. He's, he's putting a lot in so that he can have a quality place and, you know, wants to have quality peoples. But, you know, it, it, it happens sometimes that you don't get the, the best renters in. And, you know, you, you only get a two months of a payment. That's a, that's a pretty big hit for a landlord. And to clarify, I, I, I do think I understand this last piece of it. This be to Attorney Shook, I assume on this one. The security insurance is only if the property owner has 10 or more units. So this, if you just are, uh, you know, whether you inherited the property or you bought it yourself, you own one rental property, this legislation does apply to you. So that's only the, the, the exception of, of it is only the ones, only the third point of the security insurance option. Is that correct?
Uh, no, Councilmember Cotner, that, that's, uh, that's not accurate. The, uh, the, so subsection A of section 701.21, the options that a landlord is required to present to a prospective tenant. Those only apply to any landlord who owns or controls more than 10 rental units. So anyone who owns 10 or less would not be subject to this particular legislation.
All right. Thank you for clarifying. I'm sorry. I cut you off. Go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, one other point of clarification. The installment payments for the security deposit, that would be a full security deposit over six months or a landlord could accept, um, could offer to accept immediately half of the security deposit at the time that the unit is rented. So the half amount is at the same time as, as the lease is signed and the full amount is over the course of six months.
Thank you for some clarifications. I think the most important part though is the allowance of the smaller landlords that, I, I mean, again, if, if they had somebody that, you know, ruined a brand new set of cars, new carpet in there, that, that, that would hit a individual landlord pretty hard. So, um, that point is, is good to clarify. That gives the, the individual smaller property owners some flexibility. Thank you both.
Well, let me clear, let me, uh, clarify something that you said. And I'm trying to remember exactly what you said, that a landlord will get their money. You said that, oh, if a person's in there for three months and they basically animal house the apartment, they are still on the hook for that security deposit, whether they get evicted or not. It doesn't say that they do not have to pay. They have to pay, just like they would have to pay, uh, the rent. And the landlord, I'm, I would assume the landlord will take them to court to get their money and seek damages for the unit. Because even if they do pay the security deposit, who say that damages them more than what that security deposit is? They're still wanting to pay out of pocket. So why keep people from being able to rent a unit? If you're banking on somebody going in and tearing up your, tearing up your unit? That is up to the landlord to make sure they make a good educational decision on who are they going to rent to. If somebody going to tear up your place, they're going to tear it up whether they've had an eviction or not. So with that being said, is you're going to get your money one way or another. It's just that it's not, I don't want this to be a block for somebody not to be able to rent a unit because they cannot afford it because of the amount of money that is required to put upfront. Like I said, I have, for majority of my life, from a kid to college to now, I have rent. I have dealt with all kinds of landlord. Your good landlords like Mr. Brenner, your slum lords, and also your cheap lords, as I call them. And so when I talk about this, I talk about this not from somebody else's experience, but also my experience.
And I, I think most renters are good. I mean, I, again, like everything, it's, it's always the handful of exceptions to the rule. So yeah, most renters are trying their best and trying to keep the places clean and trying to pay their rent. But e- even the best person who screens someone can have a mistake or have something happen. So, uh, and again, there is no guarantee you're going to get your rent. You, you know, evictions are not easy and trying to collect through courts is not easy. So it's just, again, the security deposit gives them a little flexibility. But like I said, um, I, I, you're right. It's, uh, landlords have a responsibility to screen as best they can and have the best tenants. And, um, and, and if they go in an animal house, like you say, that they're going to have more of a headache than just a security deposit.
Do we have any other comments from council? Yes, President Pro Temp.
Yeah, I would just like to comment that if the landlord is managing the security deposit and which, uh, in the manner in which they are supposed to, which is meant to be deposited and then until that person leaves, then the landlord doesn't need it all upfront anyway, because they're not going to need it until they leave. You know, although let's, let's be honest, I'm sure there's some landlords that take that security deposit and it's probably getting spent before that person is, is out of there. If they're not, you know, playing by the rules. So, um, you know, I think this puts people in a position of not just allowing them to get into a home with less of a burden. But, um, you know, it could also be helpful for landlord and budgeting and, and handling that security deposit a little better.
Thank you, President Pro Temp. Are there any other comments? With that, I will, um, close the comments. I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a first read. Is there a second? So if we don't have a second, it's not going to move forward. Okay. Well, as there is no further business for the Public Safety Laws and Courts Committee, I return the meeting to you, President Pro Temp Bryant.
Okay. Um, next item is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland.
Yes, thank you, President Pro Temp Bryant. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for February 22nd, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, Councilmember Pacriel, myself, and President Pro Temp Bryant. Item number one, an ordinance creating chapter 1397, rental property registration to the Reynoldsburg Code of Ordinance to provide for the registration of residential rental housing located within the boundaries of the city of Reynoldsburg. Attorney Shook, would you like to say a couple of things?
Okay. Yes, this legislation is identical to that which was presented to council for a work session at the last meeting. It would be up for a first read tonight if the committee moves it forward. Uh, I am here for any questions.
Are there any questions from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move before this ordinance to council as a single read emergency measure. Is there a sec?
No, no, sorry.
Chair Strickland, that would just be for a first reading.
Okay. For a first read, my apology, I move before this ordinance to council for a first read. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? The motion carries. Item number two, an orders authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty one fireworks display, waive competitive bidding and declaring an emergency. Director Dorman.
Yes, uh, so this is just a contract that we enter in annually with, uh, Pyrotechnico, which is the company that handles the fireworks for the city of Reynoldsburg. I think they've handled it for the past several years. I'm very familiar with this company as I worked with them in the past. Uh, they do a lot of, uh, cities around our area. Basically, I know last year that we, uh, did not move forward with this due to COVID and, um, they were very accepting of the situation, basically actually honored the same pricing, um, that we had last year for this year, which I thought was um, very admirable of them as well. So this is just a contract once again to enter in that. Um, our city attorney has reviewed the contract, I believe. Um, very, very common just to move forward with that, so.
Uh, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this legislation? From council? I do have one question for you, Director, um, Doran. I see that, um, and this is only for a first reading. Is that correct? It's not for an emergency. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. Um, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there is no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return the meeting to President Pro Temp Bryant. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland. Uh, next item is for survivors.
Thank you, President Pro Temp, uh, Bryant. Uh, welcome to the finance portion of the evening. Uh, this is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for February twenty second, twenty twenty one. Uh, members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Pro Temp Bryant. The first item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend chapter one sixty, section one sixty point oh two F, Police Department of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. I'm excited about this one. Uh, is the mayor going to comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair Salvati. Um, uh, this is kind of a, a longstanding issue. Uh, we know that during the events of the last year, a lot of attention had been focused on police departments and their ability to respond to any number of certain circumstances that are out there. So towards the end of last year, uh, the chief, the deputy chief and I started to engage in conversations about how to uh, best adapt the role of, uh, Reynoldsburg Police Department, uh, when, um, things happen that are not something that is specifically trained for police officers. They have a very certain skill set and they needed some support in areas, uh, that we hope that this position will, uh, bring. It is for a public safety social worker and victim advocate. Um, basically, the role of the position is to be a supplemental, uh, and complimentary, uh, support for anyone from victim referred, uh, referrals, uh, to, for follow up on victims of mental health, uh, dependency and addiction, victim services, family services, elderly needs, uh, connections to, uh, county and statewide resources and to provide support and guidance for family members. A lot of times our, uh, police officers are out there on the front lines and they are dealing with situations in the beginning. And then what we wanted to do is to provide an opportunity for a social worker to come in after the initial contacts uh, to follow up. Uh, programs like this have been used in Indiana as well as Kentucky. Uh, they've actually lowered the rate of recidivism as well as promoted a lot of, uh, community goodwill because it's, again, it's a way to, uh, reach out to members of the community that, uh, have suffered probably some of the worst experiences, uh, at the time. Uh, for further details on this one, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Deputy J, uh, Deputy Chief Rhonda. Um, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. You know, one of the things that I, I like to say is we are, in, in terms of a crisis response as law enforcement, or like the EMTs of a crisis response. But it pretty much stops right there and there's no continuum of care. And that's what I think this position is going to help us try to fix and bridge that gap. We envision it, uh, initially as officers making referrals to this position and then this person can follow up. Uh, we also believe that we're going to have a great partnership with Truro Township Fire Department. They have a community medic and I've talked to Chief Sharps about this and they are thrilled at the opportunity to partner with us. So that's something else that we're really looking forward to, to help continue to advance, uh, the ways that we deliver public service to our community. So if anyone has any questions or anything specific, I'll do my best to try to answer.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify that I'm excited, not because of the need for this position, but I'm excited that we're willing to have this position on our, uh, police force. Um, are there any questions or comments from the committee for either the mayor or the deputy chief?
Councilmember Sav, Savati, I do have a question for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Maybe the, um, Assistant Chief will be able to assist me. Um, so with this particular, um, position, the social worker, would they also be there to, um, assist our Reynoldsburg Police Department also, or it will strictly be for the residents?
Well, this is going to be a, uh, a, a department position. So the person would be housed within the police department. And then the officers, when they go on a, on a run and they encounter a person, either an elderly person who's having problems uh, obtaining goods or services that they need or mental health care, um, people that are having problems with juveniles, uh, that are maybe struggling with the issues that they're dealing with in their family, things like that. Then we make that referral to the social worker who's going to be a lot more in tune with, um, bridging the, that continuum of care out in the community. They can also, if, if a person is having mental health issues, work with whoever their provider is, whether it's Southeast uh, or any of the other numbers of providers out there. And they're, they're going to have an expertise that just goes a little bit beyond what the, uh, the officers are trained to do.
Thank you.
Chair Salvati, may I ask a question? Well, more of a comment?
You may.
Good evening, Deputy Chief. I just want to say how exciting it is to know that Reynoldsburg is, um, introducing this position. It's another notch in RPD's belt that we are, um, the best in terms of our officers in our department in central Ohio. Uh, this is very top of mind, top of conversation amongst the community and, and, and the mainstream, um, community in media in terms of, um, interacting with, um, residents that may have any type of, um, mental health challenges. Um, I am continuing to be, um, more and more proud to be a Reynoldsburg, um, resident. Our community resource officers do an amazing job, um, helping to bridge the gap and to know that we'll have another, um, finger on the hand of Reynoldsburg Police Department to, um, assist our neighbors to, to fill in those gaps. It's much needed and I'm fully support. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember. Um, honestly, you know, the mayor has this vision and, and we obviously are in full support of it. So it was, it was just my job to try to figure out how to, how to put it on paper and present it to him. So we couldn't be more thrilled. We love the idea that we're going to be able to enhance the delivery of, um, the service that we're providing. So thank you so much for your support and your kind words.
All right. Do we have any other, uh, questions or comments from, uh, either the, uh, committee or the rest of council?
Uh, Councilmember Savati.
Please.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Deputy Chief. So recently I'm s- hearing from constituent, there are a lot of domestic violence cases that have been at rise. So I think this would be the right thing that we are doing in the city. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing this up. I think this is the right time and, uh, I hope that this position will definitely address some of those concerns, especially for, uh, survivors to reach and that certain place where they can call. And after that, the services will be connected. I hope those things will happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, this is going to be a work in progress initially, trying to get our feet under us and figure out exactly how it's going to be utilized, but, um, definitely built this on paper, uh, with an opportunity, if you decide that you want to expand it at some point, that will also be an opportunity for you to consider if it's a hit and, and we have great success with it. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none, I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, oh, so Councilmember Baker first, so second by Councilmember Baker. Um, any final discussion on this from anyone? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Great, motion carries and this ordinance be forwarded to council for its first reading. Uh, second item on the agenda is an ordinance appropriating unencumbered balances as of December thirty first, twenty twenty in various police special revenue funds and providing that revenues for funds received during twenty twenty be accepted. Uh, auditor, this sec, looks like we're moving some money.
This is actually, uh, it's not moving it, we're just, um, it's money that we already have and accumulated. It's typically the, the chief would come and ask for an emergency on this. He hasn't this year, so I haven't asked for that. But there are unencumbered balances from last year that we're moving into this year. And the, and the money that we've accumulated for this year.
Well, it sounds good that we're not asking for it for an emergency, so that, uh, that's good that they don't need it right away. Um, I'm sure they can use it eventually, though. Um, are there any questions from the, uh, committee? From the rest of council? No, all right. I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Strickland. Any last discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. Okay, third, uh, on the agenda is an ordinance to approve payment of services performed in prior year for the Development Department and declaring an emergency. Director Boucher will answer the questions, I'm being told.
Thank you, Chairman Salvati, other members of council. Uh, yeah, just administrative error during COVID, um, during the shutdown. Uh, just some bills misplaced. Um, we had the funds available, still have the funds available, ready to pay. Uh, this is just allowing, uh, the auditor to go ahead and sign off on that so those can get done. Um, it was not a miscalculation of what we were spending, just, just lost in the shuffle of COVID when we were out back in April or May, uh, just an oversight, apologies, and I hope that we can just, uh, go ahead and suffice and pay the bills.
Okay.
Chairman Salvati, just let, I just want to interrupt and, and let everybody on council know that this is not an issue that, um, is a problem unless we don't correct it here locally. It's only a problem if, if we don't fix it. So it's, it is administrative. They don't happen all the time. It's not the end of the world, but this is where we fix things like this.
Good, thank you. Um, are there any other questions for either Director Basher or the auditor on this one? Okay, I don't see any, so I will, uh, close comments and I will move to forward this ordinance to council for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Baker. Um, any final discussion? All right, seeing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries. The ordinance we forwarded to council for its first reading. All right, this fourth item on the agenda is an ordinance to increase the training appointment period of the tax administrator to ten weeks and declaring an emergency. Uh, certainly bittersweet about this one, but, uh, please, uh, elaborate, auditor assistant.
Uh, President Pro Temp Bryant and Chairman Salvati, uh, Brenda Browning has went, been with the city of Reynoldsburg since nineteen eighty five. She started when she was in high school. We are going through the civil service process to find a replacement. I don't think I'll ever be able to replace her, but I do have some notes that were sent from Joni Crawford, our finance manager, of why we need the extra two weeks. The five, uh, one sixty allows for eight weeks. We're asking for two additional re- weeks. Um, and this is what she wrote, that tax collection and reporting is in cycles. The additional time will allow the new employee to be trained in the different cycles. We cross train our employees to be more efficient and this includes the tax administrator. Um, we have several different income tax codes, contracts and tax related revenue sources. And there have been, um, changes to Jeds and E zones that we are bringing, need to be brought, uh, to bring a new person up on. Besides the, uh, tax administrators, thirty seven years of experience, there's a lot of knowledge to transfer over. But that's basically, we've already budgeted the money and it was passed, so we're not asking for any additional funds, but just the two weeks to change, uh, section one sixty.
So just for my clarification, what this means is that you'll have both the current tax, uh, director and the new one on for ten weeks, so we'd be paying them both.
Correct.
Yeah.
One, she's going to be transferring, uh, wealth of dollars over and making sure that the city of Reynoldsburg doesn't fail in any of the uh, duties that we have with tax collection, Jeds and all the other things that are going on in the city.
Yep, I don't, I don't have any particular issue. You just wanted to clarify, that's what we meant. And, uh, are there any questions from the committee?
I, I do have a, a question regarding this.
Go ahead.
So, uh, someone, if someone can help me understand, um, so this is a silver, civil service position. And I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand why are we coming to the city and asking for two additional weeks? For whoever the new hire will be, um, because again, and I appreciate all the service that the previous, uh, person had did within this position. Was there any cross training that occurred? It, it also makes me think about any additional, um, cross training that needs to maybe occur in just not in the auditors, um, area, but maybe across the board. Ha- has that happened at all? Uh, regarding in cross training and, and also just going back to my initial question is regarding the silver, the civil service position. How does that mix with, you know, coming to city council for additional two weeks?
Um, I, I see Sandra Bowler's on the, on the line and I don't know if I can answer a civil service co- question regarding their regulations. All I know is that the chapter one sixty allows for eight weeks and with onboarding and training, our office feels that we could use an extra two weeks.
Are you asking for an amendment to the charter for that?
Uh, can I jump in on this real quick? I'm sorry.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Uh, so the, the tax administrator position's a chapter one sixty position. It is a civil service position under chapter one sixty, which are, which is our codified ordinance. We typically can only have one person in one position at any given time. Uh, this allows us to have two people in one position at a given time uh, for that ten week training period so that that person can learn under, under Miss Browning. This allows us to have two people in one position at a given time for that 10 week training period so that that person can learn under misbranding. It's not a charter.
Thank you, Chris. City Attorney Shook. And the minimum qualifications and the job description should be published shortly. We're going to be sending them out to all the major government finance agencies and we're working hand in hand with our civil service department and to do all these things.
So Auditor Sasek, I think this may be part of what Councilwoman Strickland was asking, although I don't want to put words in her mouth, but do we typically, like currently have somebody cross trained as the, as the tax administrator?
In my office, yes, absolutely. The finance manager and the tax administrator have worked together the past 12 years and can do each other's jobs. The other positions are always cross trained. We're a staff of four to do everything that we do. So everybody has to know everybody else's position.
So I guess if that's the, you know, if you're saying that some people are cross trained or it sounds like everyone is cross trained, then I still don't understand why the additional two weeks is warranted if we have individuals, that person that's going to be in that current position for the eight weeks that could come in and bring that individual in and train them. And then we have also this additional person that's already a staff within your office have that trained, you know, have done that cross training already. So they know, you know, what, what is required for that position.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Strickland. I will, this request came from my finance manager. And I asked for it to go the full three readings, but just to pass as an emergency so that we didn't have to wait 30 days after that. What I will do is I'll have Ms. Joni Crawford come and answer your questions directly.
Thank you.
Vice, excuse me, Chair Savadi, I have a question. Auditor Sasek, what is the the timeline for this? The position will be vacated when? So I'm just trying to back the calendar in my mind.
The Civil Service Commission and my finance manager have been working together on the timeline. I know that Brenda's planning on leaving at the end of July, mid-July. I don't have the exact date in front of me. But the onboarding, they're going to be posting their special civil service rules of how many days to or weeks to publish the job announcement and then to go through interviews to make sure that we find the right person. And then after that, the training will begin. But I know Brenda's out here in July.
Auditor Sasek, this is being put forward as an emergency. Is this a three read?
Yes, three reads and it passes as an emergency. So we'll have more time to talk about it.
Any more comments from either the committee or council on this? Okay, I will go ahead and move forward this ordinance to council for its first reading. Do I have a second? Okay, I do not have a second. All right.
Well.
All right.
I'll go ahead in a second. I like to hear Ms. Joni's comments on, on this particular tax administrator position, so.
Thank you. That's a second by Councilmember Strickland. So any further discussion then? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries and this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. That concludes the business for the Finance and Administration Committee and I return it to President Pro Tem Bryant.
Thank you, Councilmember Savadi. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items nine A through C are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for emergency adoption. Unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion, council will move forward with voting on these ordinances. Okay, would the clerk please read items nine A through C?
Item A, an ordinance from the Reynoldsburg City Council reaffirming support of the Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT project to resurface US Route 40 and other related improvements in Franklin County appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase body cameras, corresponding equipment and licenses for the police department waive competitive bidding and declaring an emergency. C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase three police cruisers and a transport van for the police department waive competitive bidding and declaring an emergency.
All right, may I have a motion to approve these ordinances?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Savadi. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Pecorale. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Aye.
And President Pro Tem Bryant.
Aye.
That vote was seven zero.
Thank you. See, next item up is our consent agenda for first reading. Items 10A through H are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move these items forward for a first reading. Would the clerk please read items 10A through H?
A, an ordinance to establish chapters, oh, sorry.
I got to speak up. Yeah, A should be removed. Thank you.
Item B, an ordinance to amend chapter 503 of the ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg to provide fair housing opportunities for individuals and their families regardless of the source of income to pay for such accommodations. C, an ordinance creating chapter 1397 rental property registration to the Reynoldsburg Code of Ordinances to provide for the registration of residential rental housing located within the boundaries of the city of Reynoldsburg. D, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for 2021 fireworks display waive competitive bidding and declaring an emergency. E, an ordinance to amend chapter 160, section 160.02F Police Department of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. F, an ordinance appropriating unencumbered balances as of December 31st, 2020 in various police special revenue funds and providing that revenues for funds received during 2020 be accepted. G, an ordinance to approve payment of services performed in the prior year for the development department and declaring an emergency. And H, an ordinance to increase training appointment period for the tax commissioner to 10 weeks and declaring an emergency.
Okay, these items, ordinances stand for a first reading. Next item is consent agenda for second reading. Item 11A is part of a consent agenda. This ordinance stands for a second reading unless someone wants to remove it for further discussion. Council will move this item forward for a second reading. Would the clerk please read item 11A?
An ordinance to waive the provisions of section 971.16 of the city of Reynoldsburg codified ordinances for 2021 for various Reynoldsburg parks and recreation events.
Okay, this ordinance stands for a second reading. Next item up is our consent agenda for the third reading. Items 12A through D are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a vote on these ordinances. Would the clerk please read items 12A through D?
A, an ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain real property located on US Route 40 identified as parcel number 010-0174666-00.000 in Licking County and adopting permanent zoning. B, an ordinance to amend chapter 795 adult entertainment and or sexually oriented businesses or clubs of the codified ordinances for the city of Reynoldsburg. C, an ordinance authorizing the annual participation in the ODOT Road Salt Purchasing Contract. And D, an ordinance to approve the application made by Maplewood Farms LTD to have certain land located within the city of Reynoldsburg located on Summit Road permit at parcel number 125-026616-00.000 designated for placement in an agricultural district.
Ma'am, I have a motion to approve these ordinances.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Baker. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Lawson Rowe. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Aye.
And President Pro Tem Bryant.
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was seven zero.
Thank you, clerk. Next item is other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that they would like to discuss? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Councilmember Baker. Upcoming meetings, there's a schedule of upcoming council, BCA and Planning Commission meetings. Council anticipates continuing with virtual meetings through the end of March. Please note that the next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 8th, 2021, beginning at 6:30. Unless there is any additional business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:58 PM. Good night, everyone.
Good night.